Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the 2025-2026 Board of Alderman Budget Deliberations. Today is Monday, April 23rd, 2025, and we are continuing with the Department Presentation portion of the 2025-2026 automatic budget process. Will everyone please stand up and join me as we pledge allegiance and salute our flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, whose stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Alderman Archiola.
Present.
Alderman Beatty.
Present.
Alderman Bevan.
Here.
Alderman Casey.
Alderman Casey is away.
Thank you. Alderman Federico.
Here.
Alderman Fowler.
Here.
Alderman Healy.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman Marlowe.
Here.
Alderman Mo Renan.
Here.
Alderman Piselli.
Alderman Piselli would like to be excused, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Vitra.
Here.
Alderman Bytally.
Here.
Alderman Willis.
Alderman Willis is going to be late, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. Twelve are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We do have a quorum. Is there a motion to come out of recess?
Still moved.
We have a motion to come out of recess in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are out of recess. The first department on our agenda this evening, it's been changed, it's the DPLU, page 27, and we have, Justin is going to be presenting. Justin, go ahead. You can sit right down there and talk away.
If you guys are good with it, I'll stay here. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I am happy to report that this is an easy budget this year. There were some changes, not monetarily, but under our previous director, what we had done was consolidate the shared accounts, copying, duplicating, postage. We're looking to bring those back out into separate accounts, so say, the Building Department and Inland Wetlands will all have separate postage accounts. So that's what this budget looks to do, so there are some changes there. For the most part, that is, you know, just for the sake of transparency and fiscal accountability, we wanted those numbers to be reflected in each of the individual departments. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the DPLU? I don't see any. With that, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, will be the Economic Development. That's also with Mr. Justin Rosen. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you again. I am happy to report that this is another easy budget. There was a request to make a part-time employee full-time. That request was not carried forward. I think you'll notice that's a theme in this budget, that we're looking to not add new positions. So that discussion was tabled for a future budget year. But again, happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the Economic Development? Alderman Federico.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Rosen and Mr. Aradisi. My question is, I know that there's currently an open position for the Community Development Director. What happens to that salary while the position, if the position is open? How does that savings impact the budget? So either of you can answer. Thank you.
Yeah, typically when there's a vacancy, that will become either added to the general surplus at the end of the year, or in some cases where we have to hire personnel to fill, or someone is appointed and there's a stipend given, it would come out of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Healy.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Justin. On this particular position for the Community Development Director, at one point in time, the Director was responsible for tracking affordable housing, 830G, and is that responsibility currently, I believe, resides with the City Planner? Would Economic Development participate directly in that administrative function, or is that going to be completely within the City Planner's responsibility?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Healy. That's a very good question, and I think a lot of it depends, because we also have a vacancy in the Director of Permitting and Land Use, so managing 830G is a large component of what the city needs to do. So knowing that there's a vacancy in both Directors' positions, I would like to sit down with those folks and have a conversation as to how that gets tracked moving forward. So to answer it quickly, it would be, we'll see, it depends on who those people are who fill those positions, but yes, I imagine Economic Development having a large role in managing all the affordable housing in Milford.
Just in response to that, I did have conversations with the City Attorney and with the City Planner relative to 830G, the tracking of 830G. It is a statutory compliance requirement that we, as a municipality, must meet. Affordable housing is a top issue nationally, and every municipality in the state is struggling with this issue, and suggesting that we need to make sure that we are in compliance and that we do have the appropriate administrative full-time staff that's going to monitor our housing numbers. And then from there, obviously, develop and continue to develop the plan that we have in place, which is due to be renewed and updated in two years. So that's my purpose. I would certainly have an interest in this and would like to work with you in the future, so if there's an opportunity for that, please let me know. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just as by way of a follow-up to Alderman Healy, absolutely, I'm happy to continue this discussion offline, and I feel like what I should emphasize here is, this is an opportunity. We have new people coming into these positions at some point, and it's, 830G wasn't as prevalent as it was 20, 30 years ago, so there are some administrative functions, and again, I think this is a unique opportunity to sit down with the departments involved and map out a pretty responsible path forward.
Thank you.
Alderman Beatty.
Thank you. Through you to Justin. I have a concern always, when you started, you said it was decided that the positions wouldn't be filled for the budget. It made it sound like it was a cross-the-board decision, and so my concern is finding efficiencies by attrition. So that was done first. Is there a decision that many of the positions, there were just a few, three in fact, are not being filled now as a budgetary position before? Because I'm surprised that you said you're looking forward to sitting down with this person to discuss going forward, but you already made the decision that that position, which has responsibility for the 830G, wouldn't be filled. So I want some concrete affirmation of how that's done.
Absolutely. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Beatty. The decision was made not to make that a full-time position. There is still a part-time clerk A in the Community Development Office that has been, probably for the last decade-plus, that that position's been there and been a part-time position. I would say by and large, I think this is a negative-one-position budget when it comes to full-time employees. There was one addition of a police officer when I spoke. Broadly, I was saying that there were a lot of positions requested in this budget that were not moved forward, given the difficult economic times that we're in. Again, just trying to keep a lean budget, that was part of that process.
Any more questions for Alderman Mo Renan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Justin. Hi there, Justin. I have a few questions. One is, you know, Economic Development is a crucial position that's been vacant, and often during budget time, when our previous individual in that position advocated for additional help and as well as gave us some ideas of some of the going-ons in terms of projects and in terms of generating some new development. I know that you're also covering for another position, so can you give us some information in terms of some activities that are going on, and perhaps what the explanation was not to go from the part-time clerk to the full-time clerk, given that that person's in that position who could have helped in that transition and is needed in the end anyways?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Mo Renan. Thank you for the question. I will do my best to give a summary similar to what Director Nash did, and I feel like I should give Director Nash a shout-out here. She did take the position and elevate it, and a lot of the work that she has done throughout the city made its way into the new and revised job description that was posted. We are going through the hiring process to select a new Director, but again, just want to thank Julie for all that she's done. There are a number of projects throughout town. We've got the Transportation Oriented Development Project on River Street that's about to come online. This is the municipal parking garage. Should have about 125 spaces in the garage available for free public use, and then close to 250 surface-level spots, so that is a project that we can see right from our front window that is progressing nicely. We're anticipating a summer opening on that. As far as the other developments, you know, we've got ribbon cuttings all the time, we're welcoming new businesses. I do not have the new business stats that Julie usually shares, but I'm happy to collect those and send them to the Board for the months that Julie has been, the one month that Julie's been out of the office.
If I may follow up. So, okay, so those are our existing projects, so there's no new initiatives in terms of new development, in terms of helping our grant lists? That's been hit pretty hard, this budget cycle, that might help offset the impact of that, that was already in the process that you're picking up with?
Absolutely. And I, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Mo Renan, I don't want to give the impression that just because we don't have an Economic Development Director, there isn't economic development going on in the city. The Mayor's, the chief elected officer of the city, he's able to serve in that function and has been, meeting with businesses. Something that's been started under Director Nash was the Mayor's Business Tour. We completed one of those just recently, as this morning, touring Essex Industry, a manufacturing company here in town. So there are things that are going on. We are meeting with business leaders, developers here in town to look at, you know, how we move forward. You know, the subway property's being redeveloped. We've got one tenant for that, working with folks to try and secure some additional businesses to come into town. But again, happy to get the new business stats that are usually shared during this meeting and send those to the Board.
I know, I saw that posting on that business. That's an existing business, though, that the Mayor met with the leaders of that, correct? That's not a new business to Milford?
Correct. That's not a new business, and Essex has been in town for four years as Essex, another 60 years prior to that, before they were purchased. But again, that is a company that is ripe for expansion, and meetings such as the ones we've had today do lay the groundwork for them to choose Milford. They have three other locations. Again, these are a lot more than just ceremonial visits. We do get to talk to the folks about what's impacting their business, what can help, what could hurt. The biggest thing we hear is taxes. It's one of the main reasons they were attracted to Milford, so again, trying to keep those low has been a theme in pretty much every one of our meetings.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Economic Development? Alderman Beatty.
Thank you. Through you to Justin. Thank you. It's a comment rather than a question, and it's to Alderman Mo Renan's point. When we had the discussion about the proposal for the car taxes, there was a lot of talk that came from this board about the potential threats to the grant lists, that the economic conditions in commercial development would affect the grant lists, we didn't know how long. That was a lot of talk, and real talk. So that is why the concern is there about any attrition in positions that would affect economic development and new economic development. We know what the Mayor does and what that role is, but there's a reason to point that to your attention.
Any more questions regarding Economic Development? Hearing none. Thank you, Justin, for answering all our questions. Next item on our agenda is the Law Department, John Bircham. Is John Bircham here?
Yep.
You can start any time, John.
All right, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for having me this evening, and thank you for allowing me to reschedule my original date to present. As I've seen others come before me, my budget is essentially flat, subject to, you know, some contractual wage increases. We do have an open contract with the Town Hall Union, but if anybody has any questions, be happy to answer them.
Alderman Bytally.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Good evening, John. Just so we can put this to bed once and for all, the paralegal position is open, is that how I read this in? Are we looking for a paralegal, or it's somebody else? Everybody in the office is absorbing that position?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Bytally. Thank you for the question. The job has been posted now twice, most recently. The first go-around, we did not get a viable candidate to take the position. There was too much experience. We had several lawyers apply for the position, and we had several people who had no paralegal skills but wanted to get into the field. The job was reposted and closed sometime in the last week, actually. Just based upon the initial pass of, when I say pass, review of the resumes, we have quite a few talented and experienced paralegals, so I'm hopeful that that process, and we'll be able to hire somebody in the next month or so.
Thank you.
Alderman Mo Renan.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, to City Attorney Bircham. So I see on one of your line items that you had a request for computer software for $6,000, and the Mayor, as well as the Board of Finance, put it down back to a dollar. Could you just talk a little bit about what happened there?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Alderman Mo Renan. That is, that's tied to our, essentially, a request for us to change our docket management system. Like in any business, computers and computer software has become more prevalent. In fact, I, sometimes I go back and I look at historic budgets, and it used to just be computers, 20 years ago. Now there's a software component. So for our docket management, that's everything from court notices coming in saying, okay, you filed a suit, or you're a party to a suit, and you have a conference on this date, and you have a scheduling order. It's a software program, allows you to both docket it as well as docket management. You go and you open a file as opposed to the old, just taking your Outlook and creating files. The docket management allows you to put it in its own separate folder, almost like a paperless file cabinet, and assign a file number. And if Attorney Kelly came in the office and said, I think that John was working on a file, rather than searching just by, oh, that was an opinion letter regarding X, she can go, okay, what's the file number and find it. That was what that request is. We have an existing docket management program that we're not enamored with, so the request was tied to a different docket management program, but we will learn to live with it. We can't always, what's it, like the Rolling Stones say, you can't always get what you want, you get what you need. So we have a docket management program.
So you identify this request with something that would help make your operations a little bit more efficient and communicate with each other in terms of?
Yes.
Extracting and inputting information?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the Law Department? Alderman Healy.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the City Attorney. On that same item, the software, so did your department make an independent analysis that this software, the specific software that you were looking to acquire, was going to improve your operational effectiveness? And was there any participation with the MIS IT Department?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Healy. There was discussions with Adam and the IT Department in terms of, is this something that we could go with? Could it be incorporated within the system? Obviously, we've got to make sure that all security and things of that nature are working in conjunction with the global city enterprise. He blessed it. In terms of its efficacy, that's more from a user, lawyer, paralegal, legal aspect. He didn't, IT did not weigh in on that. That's more day-to-day, functioning the same way. I wouldn't tell Chief Mello, Chief Breezy about any of the software they use, because I wouldn't have any idea. But, so yeah, in terms of, could it be incorporated? With Adam's blessing, yes. We don't purchase a computer, an iPad, or anything of that nature, tablet without, hey, Adam, can we make this work? We don't want to expose the city to anything of that nature.
Thank you. Well, that's the tie-in that I was looking for, that there was a review and a connection with Mr. Heller, who is our IT, MIS head of that department, so that, you know, we have continuity and that we're protecting the integrity of the entire network. Thank you so much.
Anytime there's a software agreement?
Yep.
We send it to him. He looks at scope, and we look at terms and conditions, and he looks at the guts of it.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the Law Department? Hearing none. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Well, have a good evening.
Thank you for answering all our questions. The next department on our agenda is MGAP, Nicole Servas. Good evening, Nicole.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for rescheduling for me for tonight, this evening. I appreciate that. I'm really blessed to be able to be representing MGAP. I've been on the MGAP Committee for two terms now, and I've stepped in as of officially last night as the Chair. I've been acting Chair since January. Proud to be part of an organization that is making sure we're providing programming to the residents of Milford for the last 15 years, providing approximately 300 hours of content each year, about 25 hours per month, consisting of meetings as well as city events. We, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have with regarding to what we're looking to do. We did ask for an increase. We'll accept whatever we're able to do this year, but we're looking to bring more to the community, as well as being competitive in the rates that we are paying our team, who are doing a great job. One thing to be mindful of, that we ask you to be mindful of, is that we, our budget is only for staffing. It is not for supplies, it's not for equipment. My predecessor and the team have been very good at acquiring some great grants in order to provide the equipment that we need. And our producers and directors do a really great job in making sure it's in tip-top shape. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Alderman Archiola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the new Director. Hi. I just wanted to check, so with the requested increase, what percentage of that increase would you say was for staffing? Is that most of it?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Archiola. I don't have that percentage off in the top of my head. I can provide that to you all by tomorrow, if that would be helpful.
Okay. And in the event that this board goes with the Board of Finance or Mayor's recommendation, would that result in you having to lay off any staff?
That would not result in laying off staff. So the staffing that we would, what I can share with you based upon the budget that we've put together, is although it would increase some of the rates of the staff, it was also more so increasing the number of events that we were going to be covering. We were looking to increase by four more commissions for the city, as well as two more sporting events for the school district, and two other events for the school district, such as Music in Our Schools Month, or something in the arts realm. So those were the things that we were really targeting our increase for, more so than the rate.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Any more questions? Alderman Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Hello. So I do sit in on some of the meetings, and I know that one of your, one of your hopes is to, as you had stated, increase the different meetings that you, you know, broadcast to. So that is really a reflection of where most of this budget increase is, correct?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Marlowe. That is correct. The majority of the funds that we are asking the increase for is to increase what we're able to produce.
And do you have, do you keep track of how many people?
We sure do.
Buy in and say, you know, which ones are more popular to watch?
The most popular by far is the Thanksgiving Day game. However, the finance hearings do rank up there as well. Board of Education meetings rank up there in views, and when I say that, we're in the hundreds of views. So, and some of the newer events that we were able to stream were the Christmas tree lighting, as well as the kickoff-to-summer fireworks this past year. And that was just good, through good managing the staff and the funding.
Just one last question. Do you see any new equipment that needs to be purchased or upgraded?
Not yet, but we'll be monitoring that, and we're heading into another grant cycle, and that will be our focus for the grant cycle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for MGAP? Alderman Mo Renan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Just a quick question. So I see from last year we're budgeted $28,000 and you spent 25. And again, you had for this past, well, the year before and then this past year. So this was a pretty big increase, but you still got an increase as well, the $35,000. So the goal of still having some more viewing recordings of events, will you still be able to do some then with that increase or has operational costs gone up and you still can't do as much? I mean, will you be able to maintain at least what you're doing and then add a little bit more because it is an increase?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Mulrennan. We anticipate no slideback. We anticipate at the least doing what we've already done, if not more. One piece that we have tied in the last two years has been high school volunteers. We believe strongly in building up our community and tapping into the broadcast journalism classes at the two high schools, foreign and law, and we have utilized those students in some of our events, be it the Thanksgiving Day Game as commentators and as well as operating cameras. And we've also used those students for others, other events such as the basketball game and I think graduation. So.
Any more questions for MGAP? Seeing none. Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you very much, everyone.
For answering our questions. Next department on our agenda is the Milford Police Department. Chief Keith Mello. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. I had a little false start there on the beginning. I had the old agenda. It's out of my seat. Could have been the first time.
It surprised me as much as it surprised you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In our budget, we tried to keep it close to what we had last year with some exceptions. There are some minor reductions and, and those exceptions, just to highlight some of those, in the regular overtime and many of, not all, but many of the overtime accounts, I increased it by 2.5% to just assuming a conservative GWI, which is the 2.5% is what we're, we, we've had this year. So I have added that, that reflects a 2.5 increase in some of those wage accounts, those personnel accounts. Also in cars, while you'll see an increase in cars, it's actually a decrease in the number of cars we're going to buy from six to five, pointing out that when I became Chief, we used to get 12 to 15 cars a year and now we're, we're down to five. And the reason being is cars are expensive, a lot more expensive than they once were. In fact, looking at the numbers, they've gone up about $19,000 a year over two years. And on top of those cars, there's a $30,000 outfit to get all, to buy the equipment, install the equipment in the cars because the technology's gotten so, so sophisticated and as a result so expensive. So it actually is a reduction in the cars. But other than that, I know you have a full agenda as always, so I'd be happy to take your questions.
Alderman Akiola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Keith Mello. Hello. Last year, you actually gave a very interesting update on the use of drones and some advanced technology that the police department was adding to kind of address the, the fact that we don't chase. And I was wondering if you could maybe give an update on, on that. I understand in the budget last year, there was, you had requested money for two drones.
That was one last year. It was $40,000 last year. Yeah, I'd be happy to. And thank you for the question. We've had a drone unit for about nine years and a pretty robust drone unit. And they're really, they're very commonplace in law enforcement, not just in Connecticut, but across the country. And I've been highlighting for the last three years, the advancements in drone technology. For instance, there are drones now that are just built for public safety. And the difference in those drones are they're built with special optics, thermal imaging, night sensors, obstacle avoidance systems. And some of the current trends in law enforcement in terms of drone technology is the ability to get a waiver from the FAA with, under certain conditions and certain licenses, where you can fly that drone beyond visual line of sight. For instance, if you bought a drone and you put it up, you would have to be able to see where that drone is and you'd have a controller in front of you. And depending on your skill level, you'd control where that drone would go. The, the, for law enforcement purposes, we can obtain beyond visual line of sight. So we can now increase the range that we can send these drones out to. And it utilizes additional hardware and additional software tools that control that drone. So it's based, on the most part, on autonomous flight. It goes up, it goes on a straight line and it goes to wherever that location is that you sent it to. Drones today and what we're doing here and this advancement is it can be deployed in seconds instead of minutes. So to put it in context, most drone units, and we probably have about 15 drone, certified drone pilots, we have a drone car that's always out there. We use it for missing persons. We use it to search for suspects. We use it at, we have these car meetups as long as we have prior knowledge. In fact, we just recently used one to search for a missing, a missing youth that had some intellectual challenges. The benefit of these drones is we can see through foliage, we can see heat signatures. In fact, I just met with that fire department to, to give them a demo. But we've got to drive, you've got to get there, you've got to be dispatched, you've got to drive there. You open the back of the car, you open the case, you set the propellers up, you get it warmed up and then you send it up. And so it takes about 20 minutes, but it works well when you have advance notice. But what we're doing is focusing on getting the drone on station in seconds and not minutes. Again, to give you some examples, we get calls from time, well, frequently actually. There's someone in my backyard. There's somebody going through my car. There's somebody checking car doors. Somebody's stealing my car. By the time we get there, they're gone. Well, now we're there in seconds and the drone goes up and goes out. And once it gets that location, hovers over and now we have situational awareness. We have an eye in the sky. There's been a robbery. There is some sort of, there's a fire and there's a report of a structure fire. Instead of waiting for FD to get there and conduct an evaluation, sometimes in areas that are difficult to get to, on a marsh, in the woods, in alleyways, we now can have a drone out there in seconds that can see heat signatures, that can see heat that you can't see with the naked eye and can pick out hot spots. We met with Chief Breezy and his staff yesterday, as a matter of fact, and we've been talking to him for the last six months about the benefits that it has, the benefits that it has for search and rescue over the water. Instead of waiting for a boat, if somebody's hanging on a kayak, we can get out there and actually see. And so, but that requires the use of certain hardware and certain technologies. So the way the drone, the modern drone works for law enforcement is it sits on a dock and it's ready to go and it's charging in that dock. And that dock has connectivity, either 5G or wireless connectivity. And when it's sent out, it opens up and it goes up and it goes out. And then it can come back autonomously. And it even lets us know when it needs to come back. And so that's some of the, that's where we're going with drone technology. And, and to give you some examples, and so while it increases our effectiveness and gives us a situational awareness and it helps FD and it helps PD, one of the main benefits is, is officer safety. And I'll give you some examples. And this year or the last, I believe about 15 to 18 months, we've had three shootings in Milford. People would call and say, "There's a shooting," going from one apartment down to the street. And that happened a few different times. One of them was inside, two of them were outside. And I remember listening on the radio, officer saying, "Is the shooter still there? Additional, how many shots? Any suspects? Any victims? Do we have any description?" And you have nothing. One of them was a long rifle and it was gunshots going back and forth. Now, that doesn't happen frequently in Milford, but when it happens, I want to make sure and do everything that we can do to, to have that eye in the sky and say, "Okay, this is what you're going into." The beauty of this system, and it goes right down to the officer's phone, the officer's MDC, the laptop in the car, right down to the fire, the laptop in the car. I could see it on my phone if it went out. Now, we're not there yet, but this is where we're, we're going. And it reminded me of another incident that happened in Milford some time ago, this time of year, where an officer was, there was a flower vendor that was selling flowers on the side of the road at the Flyer Diner and there was a robbery and somebody came out and robbed this man of all his money. And a young officer they sent out there and he went out there and didn't realize that the suspect was still in the area when he saw the police officer. He came at the police officer. Now, the people in the Flyer Diner saw that he had a knife behind his, behind his back, but the officer didn't see it. So when the officer went to arrest him, this man was being belligerent. He stabbed the officer in the leg, barely missing his carotid artery. Now, a drone would have been there in seconds and would have seen that. And it would have saved the officer from likely being stabbed and, and, and could have certainly protected him from, from worse. And then finally, I think another thing that, that really resonated with me, and I'll just use it as a hypothetical, if you have a, you know, we have a lot of domestics and they can be very violent. Think about a domestic where you're having problems with certain individuals and you get to call and you know that you're going to likely have problems with these individuals. And you get there and somebody comes out of the house and lies in wait. Wouldn't it be nice to have an eye in the sky with night vision, to see that person lying with that rifle in wait? So for the officer's safety piece, I think it's, it's not only smart, I think it's essential. The technology's there. This is where we've been going. We certainly shouldn't go stock or go backwards. But it also does a lot for PD and fire to increase their response and increase their effectiveness. And I would just like to offer one other thing because I think it's important. This program here is, also offers, because there's a lot been said about drones, right? People are wondering why these suspicious drones are in the air and who is it? The PD drone, the law enforcement drones, they're the ones that, that we're getting and that we have. They have flashing red and blue, so they're identified. And we also have something that's pretty unique. We have a webpage that shows you exactly where that drone was and what it went to. So anyone could say, "Okay, is that the PD drone?" And they can go on a website and look at it and it'll show, you know, in blue, exactly where that drone went. And so it's transparency portal. And I think that that's, that's, you know, an important piece of this as well. But thank you for the question.
As with the low, low-flying aircraft and helicopters running around all the time, I know that they've complained that the drone sometimes interferes with other aircraft. How do you, how do you deal with that?
That's a good question. You know, thank you for that question as well. So what happens with law enforcement, to get a waiver from the FAA, there's what's called a UAS map that tells you what your, your altitude limits are. And they're put there because they know that aircraft doesn't go below those. And at the same time, with this software that comes with this system, it has ADS-B data, which is the same data that the towers are looking at in real time, Miss Akorsky Aircraft and at our airports. And so you see any incoming aircraft and you know where it is. It's well above, hundreds of feet above where we can go. We can't go in certain areas unless we call the tower and let them know we're coming. And we only do that in emergencies. And we do that all the time now. We're, you know, when we had problems on Walnut Beach and we were putting the drone in the air, we had to call the tower and say, "Hey, here," because that's a restricted area. Here's where we are. And then they, they divert traffic. But under normal circumstances and to grant this waiver, we had to get what's called a COA to allow us to operate up to these certain levels. The system knows where those ceilings are. In fact, if we had tall buildings, it would know where those buildings are and it could geofence around certain areas. But any aircraft, let's say a helicopter, for some reason was going to land, you know, on the green, we would know that, we would see that aircraft and we would, and the system would prevent us from even going near it due to the ADS-B flight data.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Marlowe.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Chief. Along with the drones, I thank you for the explanation on the drones. My question along with that was going to be, is there training involved for the drones and is that cost reflected somewhere in the budget as well as any licensing that has to happen for the drones? And how many people, how many police officers are actually certified, I guess, to operate the drones?
Absolutely. Thank you. We have about 15 drone operators right now. You know, one of the things that we've been saying in law enforcement, and if you were a Marine, you know every Marine's a rifleman, well, every police officer should be a drone operator. We use them when we go in. We have a, a small drone that we use and we go in buildings anymore. We don't, we don't go in buildings in barricaded situations. So, but, but for the drones that we're talking about, there is a license. And there's a, there's a test that you have to take. You have to receive a license from the FAA to be covered under this special waiver. We're only the second department in New England to get this waiver. Now Stanford's getting one soon, so they may be, as I speak, they may have gotten their waiver. But nobody else has one. And there, there's about 400 departments that are, that are in the pipe. There's a license to fly it even with a controller line of sight. And then there's another license beyond visual line of sight. The training, we've been training our officers by reassigning them. We haven't spent any money for any extra training other than I think it's $100. I could be wrong. I'd have to double check on that, but I think it's $100 to take a test. And we're looking to train probably about 15 more. You know, we're, we want to get as many people trained as possible so we know that we always have an officer in a drone car. So if something happens, we can put somebody out, or put a drone out.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the Police Department? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Chief Mello. I'm looking at the line item for bulletproof vests and I see the original request was $69,000 and in the column for the mayor recommends and the finance board recommends is $30,000. My first question is, how much is a vest? Approximately, how many vests would you get for $30,000? And second question is, do you have a plan to make up for that shortfall or that reduction of $39,000?
Sure. Thank you. So the vests is, we get federal money, and this is an interesting question because we get federal money to reimburse us for 50% of the vests, but we don't, we can't use that money because it comes, it goes into the general fund. So it reimburses the general fund after the fiscal year has expired. So we don't have that money to spend. But we go in five-year increments. And the reason that number's been reduced this year, and to answer your question, they're about $1,200, the vests. We've had such unbelievable turnover in the last five years. We've had 40, by September, we'll have had about 40, 49 people new on the department. The prior five years, we had 24. Before that, that number probably is cut in half. But because we had so many people and bought so many that we won't have to replace as many, we will in five years because we've hired so many people. So next year, that number will be higher, but that was the number that we were able to, looking at our replacement schedule, we were able to stretch out a number of vests.
Okay, thank you. And the, the federal reimbursement on that, is there any chance that, or any chance that that's at risk?
I don't, is Peter still there? I don't know how the federal money works because it goes right to the general fund. I don't think so because I think it's based upon, excuse me, whatever we spend, there's a 50% reimbursement.
Okay. So in your department, I'm seeing the full cost of the vest.
Well, we are. We, 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 we budget for it.
Yeah.
But what you don't see is the federal government gives back 50% to the general fund.
The city gets back the other half.
Right. We, we've often discussed if, can we get that money to help buy the vest to keep the budget down? But at the end of the day, it's the, the city's still getting 50% back, so.
Yep. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the Police Department? Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Chief Mello. I'm looking at page 45 of your, your budget. In midsection, Software and Maintenance, $467,133. And And on page 46, there's an additional computer software charge of $9,000. Is there a differential, why those are listed independently of each other?
Sure. So, one of those, the one on page 46, computer software, that buys a new piece of software, and it's for the computer crimes unit. The account on page 45, software and maintenance, excuse me, those are fixed costs established by the vendor. For instance, we use Sun Guard that run our computer editor dispatch, our records management system, our jail management system, our automatic vehicle locator, our training records, our evidence records, and our personnel records. And so, that, most of that money is the maintenance cost that they charge us every year, and it continues to go up. Also in there is our telestaff, our scheduling software, some additional end case software type software that does computer forensics on phones and computers, or, excuse me, yes, on computers. And so, there's a number of different software tools, public search tools that the detective bureau uses. All those, all those maintenance costs come out of that, so that's a fixed cost. Doesn't buy anything new, it just pays for the maintenance costs and support on systems we have.
On page 46, again there, we're talking computers, $75,000 line item, new or replacement?
Those are replacement or repair to the physical hardware. That number's gone down because MIS took over a lot of that, but we still have our own, some legacy systems, our own, you know, dedicated systems. And so, that will pay for new servers, it'll fix anything that's broken, but it also buys our MDCs, our laptops in the cars. We're at a replacement schedule of, we replace about five a year. It's really stretched out to six years. It used to be three. So, we're getting about six years out of a computer, and so replaces those. And those are pricey, because it's a tough look, it's a pretty meaty computer, because, you know, it's in the car, and it's being bumped around, and, but that's what that does.
Are there synergies between your department and MIS IT department through Adam Heller relative to looking at, let's say, the $467,000 relative to software and maintenance? You have particularized software, just as the law department just talked about, certain things that they need in order to execute their function and do their job. So, some of these are in that same. But you're indicating that in terms of purchasing, you are purchasing with, using the IT department also for assistance to get better synergies and better price points?
Well, our, the things that we, when we buy a normal office computer or a normal office laptop, and we're buying these rugged computers that are designed for the military and for law enforcement, nobody else is using those. Fire probably uses those, but nobody else uses those. So, there isn't any, you know, so we're buying those separate. But when it comes to servers, when it comes to other peripherals, we get those through MIS, but we are built for those separate.
Okay. Another question would be on the dispatch operations function. So, when we look at communication costs on page 44, it's just $209,467, communication costs. And does that relate to the dispatch, emergency dispatch function for the municipality? And I'm looking at page 50, the aggregate value of the dispatch function in terms of lead, safety dispatcher, there's 13 personnel there, that's about $820,000. So, do those numbers, if you add those, are those attributed to that function?
Yes and no. So, to take the first question first, PD, this reflects both police and fire radio systems. They used to be separate years ago, and then we moved the PSAP over to PD, and we put it under one umbrella. So, the entire radio system, the Motorola system that was put in many years ago, and it's probably getting close to need to be upgraded, that police and fire both operate, that's the support cost from Motorola that you see in that 209. That's what that is, it's support on portables, and on the radios in the cars, and on the Motorola system in the comm room, and the maintenance of that. The line item for personnel that reflects 13 dispatchers, we should have 16 dispatchers. That isn't enough dispatchers. If you're in this business, it's really hard to believe, and I was talking to Chief Fabrizi yesterday, and I said, can you imagine if you were still using firefighters to dispatch fire calls? Well, we are in PD, and no one's doing that. I mean, nobody's done that in probably 20 years. We still haven't gotten a fully staffed dispatch center, and we need 16 people minimum to do that. When you look at, so we are actually still putting police officers in there, and the downside of that, number one, they're not dispatchers, and we have to pay to put them through the training, which doesn't make a lot of sense. But more importantly, our public safety dispatchers are trained in police and fire, and they can be interchangeable. A police officer can't go on, can't go over to fire and dispatch fire. So, it limits us when we don't have, when we're putting police officers in there. So, that number is personnel cost for the 13 out of the 16 that we need, and then, again, the 209 number reflects the fixed cost coming out of Motorola.
Do you have an estimate in terms of what the dispatch function in aggregate costs?
If you want to assume, because we do police and fire, so if you wanted to assume all the hardware, the software, personnel costs, radio costs, I can put that together for you. But I, Fire does have some unique software products in there as well, I'd have to ask them as well. But also, we do get PSAP money that pays for the hardware that's in there.
Yep.
And that we, because whenever we've got to replace any type of equipment in there, and we're constantly replacing, you know, a lot of the stuff, we can take that from PSAP, or money that comes from the state. So, there's an offset there.
Okay. I appreciate the information, but I would like to follow up you on trying to get an aggregate value relative to dispatch function. Part of the reason is that I am a liaison to the fire department, and sit in on their commission meetings also, and then based on, you know, my prior work experience.
Sure.
You know, also have an interest in this area, because I think there are some ways that we could do some synergies and work on that.
And that's what we did when we brought Fire over. We absorbed all the costs into our budget. I mean, realistically, they should be split. But the radio system, if you, if you take, for instance, if we went to a third-party dispatch center, if we did regional dispatch, which they tried and just didn't work at our smaller town just, but not at our level, we still have to have that radio system. And we're heavily embedded in that. Now, when the radio system is, needs to be replaced or upgraded, it's probably going to, I'm going to assume around four and a half, five million at this point. I think it was three and a half, 10 years ago. You know, there are things we can look at, like trying to get on the state police backbone, those kind of things. So, at that point, you know, there may be some efficiencies that we can look at.
Yeah, I would follow up. My role is chair for public safety and welfare also. There is a regional dispatch center, it's housed at Sycamore University, it is up and functioning. The former chief of the Bridgeport Police Department, Joe Gedet, is currently the new director, and of course, Joe had experience in emergency management within the municipality of Bridgeport, additionally with Stanford, and so, and that services Fairfield and other communities in that specific area. So, the network tie-in may be an opportunity for synergies relative to the dispatch function, you know, here for us also as a cost saver.
Sure. And that's something we've looked at in the past. It's, especially, we were supposed to build a building that had a combined, had a dispatch center. We don't have room for this dispatch center. This is really, really tight. If you, I invite you to come over, I'll show you around, and there is some pretty tight quarters, so, you know, there's definitely a conversation worth having.
Thank you. Look forward to it. Don't want to tie up any more time on this. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the police department? I think that's it, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for answering all our questions, and...
My pleasure. Thank you.
Keeping this city safe. Next department on our agenda is the animal control, page 30, no, 59. Scott Ellington. Good evening, Scott.
Hello. Good evening. I'll try to be brief. For the most part, in the budget, it was just moving around money from certain accounts to accounts that I feel would be better. The only thing that I'm asking for new is due to increased vet costs. I'm asking for $5,000 into rabies control, and an increase of $1,000 for electricity. Other than that, the budget's pretty much the same.
Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the director. Just a question on the overtime line. You had asked for $32,000, and the recommended amount now is $10,000. What was that original $32,000 intended for?
That actually kind of reflects the overtime that we do, however it is being supplemented by the orange money. So, the difference is coming out of orange right now.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for the animal control department? I think that's it, Scott.
Okay. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Thanks for answering our questions and keeping our animals safe. Next department on our agenda is city clerk. Peter Smith, page 32. No, page 22.
Thank you very much. It's great to see everyone tonight. I do want to start by thanking this board for giving me the opportunity to serve in this office. Without your support, I wouldn't be here, and it really has been an opportunity of a lifetime, honestly, to work for the City of Milford in this way and in this office. The mission that we are attempting to achieve in the city clerk's office is to provide our residents and business community with efficient, secure, and transparent records of all of the actions of our city. Our goals are to implement policies that will do that, and we also are really trying to figure out how we can find efficiencies in this office. Milford is the sixth oldest town in the state of Connecticut, the first city clerk in the town of Milford was Robert Treet, who I'm sure some of you have heard of, and I happen to be the eighth city clerk and the 47th clerk of the town of Milford. So, this is an office that has been around a long time. We serve as a revenue collector for both the city and the state of Connecticut. We have over 63,000 transactions in 22 different accounts. We've secure over 2.5 million records that are in our vault, and that doesn't include the ones that are in the basement. And we're, some of those records are dating back to the 1600s. So, the job, I take the job very seriously in the context of everything we do. In addition to records, we do election duties to make sure we have fair, open, and accurate elections. Interestingly enough, Milford had the fifth highest number of absentee ballots issued, and we're clearly not the fifth largest town, but we have a very active electorate that we work with the registrars to make sure our elections are done efficiently and smoothly. We're, we do the, we do the meeting agendas, we do the minutes. You guys probably think that all of my emails are spam, but honestly, I'm sending you things, multiple things a day, and that is a task that we have to do. The office has really transformed significantly from the time Karen left. We've also had two other folks in the office leave, so we have a lot of new people who are coming in, and I'm happy to report that our new staff has really been fantastic, and they're learning well, they're smart young women, and they're doing a great job. In terms of the last full fiscal year, the last full fiscal year, we had 9,569 documents recorded in Milford. The city conveyance tax was over $1.07 million was brought to the city, over $3.4 million was brought in for the state. We had 3,385 certified copy requests for births, deaths, and marriages. And for those of you who haven't gotten the star on your license yet, you will know that the birth certificate, the number of requests for birth certificates has really skyrocketed in the last month, and the number for marriage licenses, because those of, those folks who have changed their name because of a marriage, they need to get a marriage license to lay on top of their birth certificate to prove their identity. There's a lot of activity associated with that. We do trade names, we do dog licenses, we do notary and liquor licenses. The total revenue that this office collected this year was $5,249,000. And the priorities that I have for 2026 are really expanding our digital access. I think it's really important to take those documents, they're locked away in the vault, and let the citizens of Milford and others see them. As I said, we have documents, we're probably, we probably have more historic documents in our vault than any town in the state of Connecticut. And the reason I say that is I've toured the other 1639 towns, and what I've found is that they have some documents, but most of them got shipped up to the library. We have all of our documents, and I attribute, you know, the folks who have come before me have done a really tremendous job of making sure we're taking care of these historic documents. And then, we're trying to expand IT capabilities, and I can't say enough about the IT department in the City of Milford. Adam does a great job, and what we're really trying to do is make sure that our vendors are interconnecting and maximizing the opportunities for everyone. The other is dog licensing. Dog licensing may sound a little corny, but it's a big, it's a big issue for the city clerk's office, those happen in June. And what we're trying to do is get people not to say that the government tells you you have to license your dog, but really, really let them know, if you love your dog, you got to license him. Because if they're licensed and they escape, we can figure out where they are, they can identify them, they can bring them home. It's just a thing that everyone should do for their animal. And then, again, we preserve historic documents. And I'm going to close by this story that you're going to hear more about on your Aldermanic meeting, because you know that I like to send out these, like, historic missives that some may read and some may ignore. But as most of you know, there was a shot heard around the world on April 19th, and that was in Lexington, and that happened 250 years ago. And what I'm doing is I'm going down, I'm going and really digging into the old Milford historic records, and I will let you know that a town meeting convened in Milford on May 4, 1775, so that's coming up. Deacon Nathaniel Baldwin was the moderator, and Samuel Whitley was the clerk. They voted that the great guns be mounted, voted that the guns be mounted on trucks, voted that the selectmen, selectmen to be a committee to provide for the mounting of the guns, voted that the selectmen provide powder, et cetera, as needed for the great guns at the town's expense. But this is the one that I think is really telling, and these are, this is original writing in these documents, in these books, our Milford books. They voted that the selectmen provide guns, bayonets, provisions for those who called "to defend the liberty of America" who are unable to equip themselves. And what that really tells me is 11 days after Lexington, this, the town meeting of our city was already engaged in the battle of, to, of revolution. And it says who we are, and then there are other sites within these documents that talk about what Milford did. I know, we all know that the Civil War, I mean, the Revolutionary War Soldier Monument, we hear a lot about that prision ship. But what I'm really seeing is that this community in this town that we all live in and we all love, we're real patriots. And I think part of my job and part of the reason for my being is to make sure that we all have access to this, and everyone has access to this. So, sorry to go off on a tangent, but I'm kind of a geek on that, so.
Any questions for the city clerk? Alderman Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Peter. Just curious, with all the historic documents, how are those backed up, or is there, how are they protected or backed up?
Great question. Great question. Over the, over time, they've had a couple of different systems that they use. We have a lot of, them are on microfilm, and that's great. But the problem with microfilm is it's that black and white reverse, and so, it just doesn't give you the context. What I'm in the process of doing is trying to digitize a lot of those, and technology that we all know that, you know, if you go back 10 years, digitization was very different than it is today. And we're fortunately in a time when we can do that. But I do want to point out that the original documents, many of the original documents are, have already been restored, and are in either, the documents that are falling apart, they actually bind them to rice paper to make sure they don't all crumble. They deacify them, and then they put them in Mylar sleeves. So, those are, those are protected. But to your point, and this is why I think digitization is so important, is you don't know in today's world what happens. I'm very comfortable that the vault is fireproof, I'm very comfortable, but we're, you know, we don't want to lock things away so the public can't get them. We want the public to be able to experience them. We want the public to be able to experience them and look at them. And if anyone stops by, I'd be happy to show you, it'll take too long, but I'd be happy to show you. But that's why, that's one of the reasons why I'm really focused on trying to digitize and protect all those.
Thank you.
Alderman Morenne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our city clerk. So really fascinating stories to always hear, what you bring, how you bring our history to life, and I really very much appreciate that. And as you know, we recently had an update to our city website. And in utilizing that and being our record keeper, I noticed that it only goes back two years, sometimes three years, whereas in the past, we had far more access to that. Can you speak to that and what the status is? Is that something that's going to remain to be that limited?
I'd be happy to. And the first thing I need to do is give a shout out to the mayor's assistant, Emma is, Emma has been a rock star on the website. And Emma and I are in contact a lot. What apparently had happened is the vendor had just decided that 2023 was their block off, and as most of you know, our digital records of all of our meetings, all of our minutes and agendas went back to 2006. Sometime around June of 2006, we started uploading, and all of those were on our previous website. Interestingly enough, the vendor first said it was going to be $50,000 for us to capture that, otherwise they'd all disappear. I think that we've been working with the IT department, and Emma and I have had many conversations. It looks like they may be able to data dump a raw outlay of the information so we won't lose it. And then we have to figure out a way to re-categorize it, and I've been in conversation with the folks at the I, our IT offices to figure out the best way to do that. But I would say that the value of that information is very important, because there's a lot of, a lot of different people. Interestingly, I've probably gotten about 10 or 15 calls from the public saying, "Why can't I access this meeting? Why, where did it go?" And so we're working on that. But you've identified one of the challenges. The new website is great, by the way, and I'm going to do a shout out for anyone to go in and do the notify me, because every time we put an agenda up, you'll either get an email or a text, and it really opens up government, and it's a great addition to our city.
Thank you. I agree with you, the website is great, it was a necessary thing for many time, many years coming. But I did find it strange how many times I actually go and look for previous years, and so it is limiting. So I'm happy to hear that there's some conversation going on to find an alternate way to get that and make it available. So thank you. I look forward to hearing the update on that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. We're not going to lose that, and even if I have to sit there at night, you know, downloading it, we're going to do it.
Alderman Archeolo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our city clerk. That is so cool, like, just the, you know, I mean, I've worked with city clerks previously, but you seem to be the first one that I've met that has such a passion for the historic side of your job. And I love that you're such a steward of our history. And I still haven't taken your offer up on seeing the skins from the 17th century written by Native tribes. How would you digitize a skin?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, those are preserved in, that's actually Land of Record III that has the, it's actually an interesting story. It's the city of Milford, the residents of the city of Milford bought basically Woodbridge from the Wapowaw tribe after, this is in 1703, and there is a list of every single citizen of Milford who paid money in to purchase that land. And then what happens is the Native Americans used symbols, and they wrote symbols on the parchment. And it is, it's actually in very good shape. I mean, that's, and so it's in, it's behind Mylar, it's pretty well protected, but it's a pretty cool document.
That's awesome, thank you.
Alderman Beatty.
Through you, Mr. Vitro, to our city clerk. I was one of the people who came in because of the SAVE Act to get copies of birth and marriage certificates this week. And as always, as it was in your predecessor's office and before that, the service was pleasant, efficient, professional. And it was a rewarding experience, as Alderman Archeolo just said, to read about the patriots and to get that history. So I think you've expanded the scope and breadth of the city clerk's function without, while enhancing all of it. And I remember when you were campaigning, talking about your vision for a city clerk, and I see that operationally, and it's very much appreciated and will help us. It's almost as if you see the city clerk role, including the website, is to use technology and history to make government function better. And I think you should be congratulated for that. And lastly, you're the happiest city clerk ever, so you know, so you really are welcoming this new adventuring journey, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the city clerk? Alderman Federico.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Through you to the city clerk. A question, you mentioned on the website that you can sign up for notifications. Is that like, is that news being published somewhere? If it is, I missed it, but I get constituents all the time saying to me, "Well, how will I know when the next meeting is? How will I know what's on the agenda?" So how will we broadcast that, that people can sign up?
I mean, I've pushed it out there a little bit, but you're right. I mean, the challenge that we have is it's hard to let everyone know. But when I get back, I'll make sure every one of you have an email in your email to demonstrate and something you can forward. But it is a, it's a, it's a big technology shift from what we've had before, and it really is a wonderful way.
Yeah, I think, I think it's excellent. Because I've had people ask me, and I said, "Well, you just gotta go keep checking the website," which isn't very efficient. Which brings me to my second question. I love that part of your priorities mention enhancing IT capabilities and maximizing system efficiencies. Is there anything, can you expand on that a little bit? Can you talk about, could that eventually lead to cost savings in the budget as we enhance efficiencies?
Yeah, I think, through you, Mr. Chairman, sorry. I think anytime someone new comes into an operation, they see it with different eyes. And one of the things that I realized is that often I was asking, "Why are we doing it that way?" And the answer was, "Because that's how we've always done it." I think technology, I mean, the good news for the city is I think there, at least from the operation that I see, is there's a lot of opportunity to drive technology into cost savings. I mean, and human capital is what we use for a lot of things, but what I'm trying to do in this office is to, is to get the public, which sounds crazy, but I don't want them to have to come in. I mean, in a perfect world, the city clerk's office is a 24-hour virtual office, that you can do 90% of whatever you need to do online. And that means that we're digitizing more of our land records, we have a lot of title searchers, a lot of lawyers, that we were back to 1967, we're in the process of moving that, all of our land records back from 67 to 1960, which is over 200, 120 volumes of those big, heavy volumes are being digitized as we speak. I think there's a lot of things that we can do in terms of enhancement of revenue as well. I mean, one of the things that we did, and we were just having conversations today, is there are certain statutory obligations that some people would do if they knew about it, but they don't know about it. For instance, condominiums in the state of Connecticut are required to annually give a list of the associations, called the resale certificates. The compliance that we have on that is about 30 or 40%. It's a state statute, and I'm not, you know, we're not the police, but in the same time, and some of the folks that I've reached out to said, "I never knew we had, that we were supposed to do that." All of those things actually enhance revenue coming into the office. So we're really, we're focused on trying to make the office easier to deal with, but also making sure we're maximizing the revenue that we can collect. Mr. Ari Dizzi has made it clear to me that we collect a lot of money, and he expects us to do a good job at it.
All right, thank you very much.
Alderman Healy.
Thank you. Your handout is demonstrative, well done, and I'm looking at total revenue collected city and state at 5.249187, and your total budget personnel and operating is about $850,000. So I think you are making our finance director happy in terms of the revenue that, you know, your department is pulling in, so it's not really a question, you know, relative to that. You're functioning well, you're getting compliments here tonight, and I will add a personal compliment also, that dovetails into some of the comments that were previously made. I looked at the IT department this year in terms of budget and did a review, and then had to contact our city clerk to quantify getting the minutes from the June 5, 2006 Board of Aldermen meeting that, where Mayor Richatelli created the MIS department as a separate entity reporting directly to the mayor. So I found that interesting, but Peter, you were a great asset to help me because I was not able to complete that search online, but you did provide me with the information and the data, and well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the city clerk? Seeing none, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering all our questions and doing a good job in the city clerk's office. Next department on our agenda, registrar of voters. Registars Deborah Fellenbaum and Carrie Rollin, page 15.
Good evening. I think Pete, city clerk Smith usually joins us for the elections part of our discussion, so if we want to talk to you, Pete, you'll, okay. So just to start with the elections account, we have two major implementations happening through, in conjunction with the state of Connecticut. Of course, our computerized voter registration system is being completely changed, and we are hoping, we will have our first training next week, and we're hoping for that to be up and running in early June. And it'll, it'll take quite a big learning curve. We were just at our registrar voters conference and learned a lot about what it's going to look like, and it is very, very different. It's just much more modern. So hopefully, our ability to work in Windows will give us a leg up, because we're pretty proficient in that regard. But there's a lot of detail, a lot of detail, and a lot of different keystrokes, for lack of a better word, on how to actually register voters and store the data in this new system. In addition to that, we will be getting our new tabulators finally. I know that I've been here year after year after year reminding you that I'm very worried about the old ones, and the old ones are going back, and the new ones are coming in. One of the things that I'm concerned, Deborah and I are both concerned about, is some of the hidden costs associated with that. Training all of our election workers is one piece, but the other is little things like the new thumb drive that will hold the ballot count. There, we get one, and I don't feel as though not having a backup is really a safe bet, so we'll have some costs associated with buying the extra backup thumb drives. There's also a ballot tote that sits perfectly into the ballot box so that the ballots fall into the tote. The moderator can pull the tote out, put a seal on it, a lock and a seal on it, and then wheel it away. It actually has wheels. Rather than the current system, which is pull ballots out, take them and put them into a bag, sort them around, it's okay, but this would be a much more secure operation. The totes do not come included in our purchase. So that is something that I'm hoping we can use election account money to make our process a little more efficient and a lot more secure. So those are the two big things. And of course, we're here to, unless you have something you want to add, answer your questions.
We always have to talk. Hello, everyone, good evening. Pete was talking about his new staff, but we have our old staff, and they're very efficient too, I just have to say that. That is true.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add to that? The election is really a team effort that we do, and I will say that it was a pleasure working with these two in a presidential election that, as everyone knows, had record turnout. But the idea that we're going into a brand-new system, and what I've experienced in terms of the many meetings that we've had with the Secretary of State's office, is that deadlines are continuing to move, and they're not moving forward, they're moving backwards. So it's going to create some interesting challenges, even though this is a municipal which will have lower turnout. But the thing that is going to be different in my office is, early voting is going to start with these folks in, you know, 10 days, whatever, 14 days before the election. But in my office, absentees will be no-excuse absentees. So what that will mean is that voting in Milford will actually start October, you know, the first week in October. And so it's going to change, I think it will change the way elections happen. And I think I just, you know, to let everyone know that we can't really see into the future, but I think we should all be proud of the way that Milford ran their election. When I talk to other clerks around the state, they tell me all the long lines, people were waiting 45 minutes, it was chaos, it was bedlam. I will tell you that these two young, these two young ladies did a phenomenal job of early voting, and, you know, that's only because they have experience and a great staff.
So we have to take questions, sorry.
Any questions for elections or registrar of voters? I think you're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Have a nice night.
The next department on our agenda is the Bethel Center. Jennifer Perez.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm joined tonight by our president, Justin Kobe, and the co-chair of our Capitol Campaign, Rachel Murva, as well as a couple of other fans and board members in the back. It's wonderful to see you all tonight. Thank you for taking me early. I guess you didn't want me to say good morning to you this year. So it's been a very eventful year at the Bethel Center, and so it's my hope to spend a little bit of time, not too much time, but a little bit of time with you all tonight to really just walk through the status of the work that we do and the folks that we serve, our community. In your packets this evening, you have a number of handouts, and I know it's a lot of information to digest, and I'm just going to go over a couple of highlights. Unfortunately, I am here to share again this year that statewide and nationally, we've seen another increase in housing instability, which relates to homelessness and food insecurity and hunger. And so we certainly see that impact at the center and the work that we do. Specifically, in the state of Connecticut, we've seen a 13% increase in homelessness year over year. And there's a few kind of statistics in that that I think are important to mention just because they play a role. One is we're seeing more older adults over the age of 55. Some of the information that I'll share tonight, I'll try to mention demographics without everybody swimming in numbers, but the, I think this is important to mention because it is a pretty strong trend that we're seeing across the state, and we're certainly seeing it here. It's difficult mostly because there's not a lot of interventions that we currently use for older adults. A lot of what we do in terms of providing subsidies for individuals to gain more housing instability is contingent upon their ability to increase income. And of course, the older you are, the more disabled you are, the more difficult it is to increase your own income independently. So if that pool is swelling, it just kind of stalls the work happening in other places, bottlenecks. bottlenecks, and we have to really kind of sharpen our pencils and go back to the table on innovation. The second relates to just what we're seeing in some of those bottlenecking practices. We have seen an increase statewide in, in the length of stay for people experiencing homelessness. So all that means is that people are in these kind of crisis situations longer. There are longer waiting lists, longer times in shelter in waiting for maybe a subsidy or support to meet their needs. Right now, there's one housing voucher for every five people that qualify for one. And so just it is a resource piece. And why I mention that, and I'm going to follow all of this up with good news, but why I mention that is because of that, we're seeing an increase in unsheltered homelessness. And that's really concerning. We've seen a 25% increase in unsheltered homelessness, so 13% overall in homelessness, 25% increase in unsheltered homelessness. And that's really concerning because as people experience unsheltered homelessness, remember also the rising trend of older adults, they become, it's, it's a much more difficult thing to kind of wrap your arms around, manage and help that person get out of that situation quickly, efficiently and cost effectively, quite frankly. So, so, you know, really not great news there. I always want to couple this conversation with the fact that if we, if we, if we look at 10 years of data, Connecticut leads the country in homeless response. So what is happening in our state over the past couple of years is really the question that we want to consider. A lot of that comes down to funding and the resources necessary to do the work. How it relates to Bethel Center. So we really pride ourselves on, on increasing capacity, making a way and, and working towards resolving the cases that come to our door. And so one of the items that you have in your folder tonight are, is our 2024 annual report. We're working on a larger impact report that'll be on our website over the next couple of weeks. But really, it just tells the story of the numbers that we saw this year. I won't walk through all of these numbers, of course, but overall, I wanted to mention a couple of things. So you heard me talk about the state trends and here's how we're bucking those trends. So in, in emergency shelter services, one of the documents you have is our tenant certification course. So we are, and this is a new program that we started in 2024. We're providing a five-week course for every guest that comes through our program that helps to ensure that they understand the roles and responsibilities of tenancy and housing stability. That doesn't mean that folks are coming to us without that knowledge. Some of them absolutely are, but we know that it's nice to get a refresher. These are all courses that I wish I took as I was graduating high school. I probably would have made some less mistakes, but, and that has really helped us house people faster. Landlords are really receptive to getting a candidate for their unit who has just graduated from this course and has been able to explain kind of the, the learnings from that course. So over the past year, we've reduced our shelter length of stay by 50%, which has allowed us to serve people faster and more people, of course. We've also increased the average income for every person coming into the center on average by $1,000 a month. And we do that by connecting them with workforce opportunities and also on, and making sure that they are connected with their unearned benefits, things like, I don't like that term unearned, but social security, social security disability, things of that nature. The second piece, you heard me talk about the increase in unsheltered homelessness, the 25%. And we absolutely see that in Milford. We saw that in our No Freeze program. Our No Freeze program in the previous winter season served 99 unique individuals. This year, we served 206, 206. So over double the amount of individuals. Not everybody stays every night, of course. We don't have room for 206 people. But what we did see was just more diversity of people. Our oldest guest in that program was 81 years old and we saw about a dozen 18-year-olds who were disconnected from, from their family units. Again, it's my goal tonight to tell you what we're doing about it. That's why you provide us these funds. 70% of the folks that came through our No Freeze program, that 206, were connected with a long-term resource. So they either came into shelter to get further case management, they were permanently housed from the No Freeze program, or they were transitioned to a intervention that was a better fit for them, like long-term care. And so we were really happy at those results. It's a lot of hard work. This is a difficult kind of program to, to run, but are really successful in that because honestly, the baseline goals of that program are to keep people from dying outside during winter months. Last but not least, just a couple of highlights on increasing capacity. So our outreach and engagement program, we were able to increase capacity in that program by 100%. That is by supporting our one full-time outreach worker with some volunteers and additional assistance. We served about 600 households in diversion, which is homeless prevention work. So these are folks that will not come into our emergency shelter program because we helped them stay in their current residence or helped them transition to another environment. We saw in our community kitchen, pretty consistent numbers year over year. This is again, zooming out, a larger trend. So in 2024, we served 50,000 meals, same, around the same number as 2023, but that's an 85% increase since 2018. And so again, I mean, people are just, they're stretched, every dollar is stretched. And so they're using that to supl, they're using our community kitchen to supplement what their monthly income is. Last but not least, I just wanted to chat. So I talked about our tenant certification course. I also want to just briefly mention the work that we're doing with young adults, high school students and college students, really ensuring, you heard me mention that we had over a dozen 18-year-olds coming into our No Freeze program. You know, the center has not had a kind of a direct link to homeless youth and understanding this issue, right? It's not been kind of a subject matter where we, we've really had direct connections to. And so we've established a youth, we're calling it Youth United, or they call themselves Youth United, which is a youth leadership program that focuses on educating high school students on the issues of homelessness and hunger, helping them speak with their peers about these issues and resources that are available and helping us as an organization really make sure that our programs and our messaging are reaching this population. Because I am not in that category and neither of our, none of our staff are. So it's really helping us expand that. Tonight, we're asking, and, and thank you to, to the mayor's office and the board of finance, we're, we're asking for a $5,000 increase in what we were provided in previous years. I hope that some of the numbers that I walked through tonight and the work that we're doing has made why that investment is so necessary and clear and we'll continue to do the work for, for the city as, as best as, as we can. And we continue to look for more diverse and innovative ways in order, in order to do that. So I'm not sure if Justin or Rachel want to say anything, but also happy after that to take any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Bethel Center? Alderman Moranin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Jennifer. Thank you so much for your presentation. I, I guess I just had a question with you referring to the success of your tenant program and the easier transition to housing. I know when I had gone on a tour of your center, one of the disheartening things that I had learned at the time was that oftentimes for those that reach that point to go into a sheltered setting, that very rarely do they get relocated in Milford. So I thought I saw a story recently of someone who did get placed in Milford, but I wonder where we stand with the percentage and hoping that we have somewhat of an improvement compared to when I learned this piece of information.
Thank, thank you for that question. The gentleman that you're referring to that we highlighted in our social media is the, first and only person that we've been able to re-home back in, in Milford in many years, in many years. You know, there's, there's a lot of reasons for that. One, you know, as a community and you all have had these conversations, planning and zoning has had these conversations, there's some work to do around the affordable housing component and not just capital A, but lowercase a, right? Naturally occurring affordable housing. We, there are not many people and certainly not the folks that are coming to the center for support who can afford the average rent in Milford. The other piece is a little bit more systemic and I don't know it can be solved by any one municipality, but I would put it on, on this one to get it done if I had, if I, if I was a betting person. And that is that typically the subsidies that we use, which are federal subsidies and state complements to those federal subsidies that we use in order to support housing folks who, whose income does not match what, what they need to be housing stable, they, they can really only be applied to a fair market value, a fair market rent. And the fair market rents are deemed and we're grouped with Milford, Ansonia and Seymour. And so they're, they're, they're lower than what the market is, is pricing these units at. And so it, it does kind of move people around to places where they would otherwise probably not choose, right? If you are able to live, if you were able to afford a Milford and you're from Milford, then you would move back to Milford. But so, so there's kind of two pieces there happening, right? It's the environmental conditions of the market here and it's also the resources that are typically used for folks who are low income to be housed. And I'm happy to go into more details about that if, if, if folks have questions. But we certainly, this is, this is important stuff, right? Being able to intervene, prevent somebody from being unhoused or to help somebody become rehoused should not mean that that person has to leave the community that they came from, right? This is the work that, that we're all trying to do is keep communities together. So it's, it is certainly a struggle.
Thank you. So it was our one and only, then is what the end result is at this point, but it's a start, right?
At this time, yeah.
Thank you.
And if I might, if I may, we, we also have a landlord engagement program. So if there are landlords who are in Milford who are interested in engaging, we have a lot of incentives for landlords, for property managers to, to work with individuals who are utilizing services, including case management support for the property manager or the landlord. So, so we're always looking for ways to make sure, I mean, the landlord, property manager, whoever it might be, is the third leg to this stool, one being the tenant and the other being the support of the center in the long term. So we, we want to make sure that folks know that because we know renting properties, you're inherently taking a risk. And I meet tons of landlords who have had horrific stories of people who have not treated their units with respect. One of the reasons why we developed the tenant certification course was in response to that. And it was, the coursework was developed by our residents and landlords.
Alderman Harkiola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Hi, Jen. Hi, Justin. Hi, Rachel. I just had a quick question. I, I attended a board of directors Bethel meeting recently where members shared concern about potential lost funding at the federal level and uncertainties surrounding that. As a, last we spoke, we were searching for contingencies in the event that something happened like that. Would you foresee coming back to this board in the event that your funding was cut in a major way before the next fiscal year?
Yeah. Thank, thank you for that question. It's a, it's a difficult one, right? And I know it's one that many nonprofits and, and many nonprofits, municipalities and all of us are kind of charged with at the moment. So I guess what I would say is kind of first, the center is certainly reviewing our risk and kind of what the current market conditions are, environmental kind of federal landscape is. You all should know that about $750,000 of our budget, the Bethel Center's budget, is federal dollars, our federal, our federal funds. That's about 43% of our budget. And so that certainly, you know, if we were to lose all those different funding sources at once, we're kind of looking at a place of catastrophe, right? We'd be consolidating programs, we'd be laying off staff, all while homelessness increases, right? And so that's, that's obviously a huge concern. It's not every program kind of the same. Some programs are funded 100% by the federal government and some of them are funded kind of as low as 25%. So it does not kind of impact that across the board in the same way. It's seven full-time staff and eight part-time staff, just to give you a sense of kind of what those funding sources are, are connected to. And it's, it's, you know, about 1,200 individuals a year who would be impacted by, by said cuts. You know, we, we have already lost this year about $20,000 connected to emergency food and shelter programming. That is, those are FEMA dollars. Those were put on kind of permanent suspension, I guess at this point, excuse me, in late January, early February. We're watching everything else very, very closely. You know, it seems like there's, there's certainly cuts to HUD, about 50% of the, the workforce was laid off there, but not necessarily cuts to programming. This is, this is where we are. So, so if we were to lay out the next 12 months, you know, quite frankly, the, the first and most immediate threat to us is the state of Connecticut. A lot of the federal, the federal dollars that we're, that I'm talking about right now pass through the state of Connecticut to us. There is actually not one state-generated dollar that comes to the center, which I think is really important for people to understand and for people to know. And so there, you know, CGA is, is in session, they're working on their budget right now. We, we got a preliminary summary of what the appropriations committee did this week on that. And, and this is important because that budget comes first and it really determines kind of where, where we are. And a number of, we know ARPA was helping to support a lot of our positions and many positions around that too, and we're losing that this year. So the state has to come in and I just think that that's really important for, for, for us to all know. Then we're watching for the federal government. There's some, somebody told me today that we'll have a budget by mid-August. I don't expect that to happen, but, but we'll be watching that very carefully. And it looks like the cuts at this point that will be made, or at least that are being proposed, would really just create more housing instability, not necessarily cut homeless services, but we're talking about ending federal subsidies and things like that that would destabilize families that would come to us for, for more assistance, if that makes sense. So it's kind of like a trickle effect or trickle-down effect. Without getting too far into the weeds, we're then quickly looking at the next federal budget because a number of our contracts are two-year contracts and we're kind of off this year. And so really next year is the, is the bigger kind of, kind of impact. You should know that our, our finance committee is working diligently to make sure that whatever happens, that we can continue to keep our doors open and provide the services that we do to the community. It might look different. None of us have a crystal ball on that, but I think it's important that we're kind of sticking with what we know to be true and I am trying to find that truth every day.
Jen, if I can ask?
Yeah.
I'll also say, as the president of the board of directors, we spent about two hours last week looking through line by line by line by the budget. And Jen and her staff are so financially conservative, there is not a wasted penny there, but we are looking at everything from, you know, salaries and benefits and, you know, looking to businesses for in-kind donations, finding out where we can rely on volunteers more because we don't want to have to come to you, even talking about going to our neighbors and, and asking other towns to chip in. So that's a last resort for us. And, and Jen and her staff are looking at all of the children in front of them, they don't want to have to let any of them go, but we have, we have looked at a lot of contingency planning. So thank you all for your support.
Any more questions for Bethel Center? Yes, Alderman Willis.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a statement. We hear about federal money being cut and not being allocated the way it should be. I just want to encourage everybody, we can say, you know, just hope it just doesn't happen or whatever, that the thing that people need to be doing is to call their congressmen and to call their senators. Not only do you call your own congressman and your own senators, you also call out of your district to and encourage these people to do their job. Thank you.
That wasn't a question to me, but if I, but it was a statement. And I think it's a really, really important one, especially for municipalities to be having the conversation right now, because, you know, we are impacted and we're watching all of this as a nonprofit organization, right? And we're vulnerable to all of this. But when the federal government and the state government are not kind of in a good place, they are really looking for municipalities, and I don't have to explain any of this to you all, you guys get this, but they're really looking at municipalities and saying, what can municipalities bear? And I know and that you know, it's not here, right? And so I just, yes, we've kind of put enough on the backs of municipalities, of the local nonprofits, and this is a much bigger, bigger kind of action at play that we really need to be considerate of. So I do appreciate this statement. And I sit in a lot of meetings that just talk about, hey, you know, nonprofits are just going to have to go to their municipalities. And I talk about Milford, and I say, Milford supports us 100%, 100% in everything that we do. And I'm not going to you for, you know, I mean, this is really, it's a time for all of us to be together. So I appreciate that a lot.
Any more questions for Bethel Center? Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Jennifer and the staff that's here. You know, I want to thank you for your dedication, the presentation that you've brought forward this year, last year, the hard work you continue to do. And the question is, could you update us on the plan and the capital campaign drive? I think this would, you know, is an important, very important attribute to the whole program.
Yeah, absolutely. So I've kind of been describing this as like conversations of scarcity over here and conversations of abundance over here, and you just have to be able to like do two things at once. We just put out a public bid for a general contractor earlier last week. We have, we got a little bit delayed in our architectural planning. You can always expect delays in that area. And so the kind of next steps on this process are to get the estimates from the, for the general contracting. We have to then put our whole project forward back to the Department of Housing to support the construction costs. You know, we don't have final numbers on the construction cost, but right now it looks to be like $10 million, $11 million. We lost a basement, so that took off that top number, but also delayed the project a little bit. And so with that said, it's a little tough to say, we hope to break ground in September or October of this year, and to be in that building by the middle of next year. And so, but we are working every day at that end. We're really, really grateful to the support of the Department of Housing. Commissioner Sheila Mosquero Bruno is a Milfordite. We should know that and be proud of that. And her team at Department of Housing has been incredible in helping us get this done. We should all be excited about this project, because it is really thinking about what shelters and soup kitchens are in 2025 and what we're going to be in the future, right? We are not going to be kind of volunteer-run programs. We'll still have many, many volunteers, but we've come so far. You see in the numbers just how efficient we are, what the outcomes are. We want to do so much more by way of homeless prevention services. It's so much more cost-efficient to just ensure people are not, you know, evicted or become homeless for whatever reason. And we're doing more and more of that work. This new building is just really about rightsizing the work that we do now. For folks that have taken a tour, and I please welcome anybody to take a tour, many of you have been inside the center, we are sardines in a can. We are crunched in there, and we do really, really great work. We do a lot of work in that space. And so this is really just about ensuring every single program has space to be able to operate efficiently. But also that we have the space overall to address things like unsheltered homelessness, to address things like the need for more supportive housing for older adults with complex medical issues and all of that. So happy to answer any more questions. I included the FAQ sheet for our building project and our capital campaign, just so you all have a little bit more information about that. We're about, I would say, almost a third of the way to our goal, our capital campaign goal, and that is separate from the support the Department of Housing is committed to the project.
Do we have any local corporate sponsors? And, you know, what's an average type of donation that you've been able to garner to this point?
We would accept any level of a donation. Do you want to talk about this?
We have, we'll have naming, we have naming opportunities, bricks, you know, we're going kind of high and low and everything in between. So, yeah, so it's really, you know, gifts as low as, it's over a number of years, so we're pledging, so you don't have to come up, you know, upfront with everything if you don't want to. But it's a multi-year campaign. So we've got gifts that range from $100 to over...
$50,000.
Yeah, over $50,000. So it's really as little or as much as you are comfortable with.
Thank you. I mean, the board recognizes the great work that you do within the community, and we can certainly, you know, work collectively together to help get the word out and, you know, the encouragement, you know, for this endeavor in particular, because of the infrastructure that's needed in order to serve, you know, the community at large. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the Bethel Center? Hearing none. Thank you, Jen.
Good night.
Thank you, Justin, and your staff. Thank you for all the work you do.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a five-minute recess?
All the Aldermen, please take their seats. The next department on our agenda is the Public Works. Mr. Chris Salee. Chris, what I'm going to ask you to do tonight is, we're going to just combine all those departments. If you have any brief presentations for any big changes or whatever, you could state those. And then when our Aldermen want to question, ask a question, they'll tell you what particular department they're asking the question for, okay? That'll expedite the whole thing and be more efficient. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to tell everyone thank you very much for letting us have the opportunity to come and speak before you. And obviously, thank you for letting us be the last person to do it. So it's going to be an enjoyable thing, and I will not talk a lot. I figure people have the questions. The budget is pretty straightforward. Our budget is pretty flat. There's two or three items that you'll probably address, but I'll let you guys do that. So open the questions.
Thank you, Chris. So when you ask the Public Works a question, just tell them which department you're referring to. Any questions for Public Works?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much to Director Salee. Can you just give us kind of an update on the advancement of your, what you guys are doing with the Fire Department? You know, we had originally heard that by November of last year, plans would have been done. And I know that there have been a number of things that have kind of set that back. Where are we at this stage? And can you just give us an idea of what moving forward is still coming down the pike?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Jenkins, I appreciate the opportunity to address it. I know there's been some concern with individuals, both for the fire station and Alderman. So this has been a long process. It started with a roof replacement over a year ago, December. And truthfully, the building was neglected for 20 years. There was significant damage to the roof structure, to the underlayment. The building was renovated, I think, in 1992. Am I correct on that? I think it was, 1992. And there was a lot of work that was left undone. So we went in and we ended up demoing with a abatement contractor, taking the ceiling down, grinding the floors, which had asbestos in it, through a, you know, state-certified program, and getting the place cleaned up, at which point we realized, or the Fire Department wanted to move some doors around and move some openings around and move some plumbing around. And I know there's been some information about, you know, this has been a long process. I would disagree with that. This was a major project that was never funded, never bonded. We did it internally and working with local companies at a significant savings to the city. My estimate probably, and Alderman Marlowe can answer it too, a renovation project this scope is easily between $250 to $300 a square foot. We're going to be under $100 a square foot, using our self-employed or our electricians, our plumbers, our heating and cooling guys, and also working with local companies. Modern Heating and Cooling was one of them. Olympus was another local company we've used. And we really have a good product going there. There's going to be two new rooftop units, a new heating system that's going to be better balanced than was previously there. We spray foamed the ceiling, so the building is going to be more efficient. We're working with the UI presently right now to update all the lighting and controls in the building for lighting, which is, it's a program that it's going to go on the UI bill. It's a two-year payback, and after that, it's going to save the city approximately $11,000 a year in energy costs. That's a present energy cost, and everyone knows where energy costs are going, so it's going to be more money. At the present time, we're waiting for the painters to come in and paint the walls. Once that's done, then the ceiling will come in, and then we'll have the floor coming in. So we're cautiously optimistic that we'll be getting done in the next month, month and a half. And there have been some delays, but this is a challenging time to get any kind of construction work. And you can't work on top of people. So we have to let one tradesperson get in, and then another person come in. And we did a monster job with the electrical work in there. There was work that was done that was left in place from 1929, that the fire marshal requested us to remove, and our guys did it all internally with no outside help. I got to say, the building maintenance department as a whole has done a tremendous job in that product. And again, I will say that, you know, in my opinion, we saved the city between $600,000 and $800,000. And I know the Fire Department wants to be there, but they're in a beautiful building at the Taylor Building, and it's a quarter mile away from their existing building. So if they have to walk a little bit, I guess it's a little bit of a hardship, but it's not going to kill them.
Thank you for that.
Any more questions for Public Works? Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Director Salee. Director, can you tell me any unfunded or any open positions that are funded that you have not been able to fill?
So presently, we have approximately, I think it's 19 unfilled positions. We just filled two positions with truck driver laborers. The issue we had, believe it or not, is we offered the jobs to one or two other people. They turned them down because of the talent they worked and ended up offering them more money. It's a very competitive time right now. And I think the city does offer fair wages, but it's very, very competitive. An example, the gentleman was working from a community very close to us. We offered him money that was going to pay him $4 more than what he was presently making, and then that talent came back and offered him substantially more than what he was making. And that's not, that's the first and second one. We also had an electrician at wastewater that we hired. We offered him the job. He accepted. And again, a budding talent offered him substantially more after they realized they were going to lose him. Very competitive time right now. Getting back to the answer, though, it's, we have a number of positions that are vacant that we're in the process of slowly filling.
Of the 19, what's the aggregate dollar value of those 19 positions that are funded but unfilled?
I would say to use as a round number, I would say $60,000 a year.
For each one of the positions?
Yes. There's some that are a little less, or some a little bit more, Alderman Healy, but some...
But an average?
Yeah, just if you want an average amount, $60,000.
If I'm not mistaken, you were seeking a master mechanic last year that is, you were unable to fill, and that's still not filled?
Yes, there's two positions in the budget for that, and presently, they're budgeted for, those positions are budgeted for $65,000, $65. I can give you the exact amount if you want it.
I just didn't see, I didn't see that title, master mechanic, in the budget document.
Let me just...
Seventy-five? Oh, okay, now I see it. Thank you.
Yeah, 75, yes.
Okay. And what would you propose to do since you've been over a year and unable to fill those positions? So I'm going to assume you have an operational need, obviously, and you're looking, so are you... you outsourcing?
It's, it's one of the things you'll be seeing. We're going before the Finance Committee on Monday for a $250,000 budget transfer from solid waste, a solid waste account to the garage account parts, because, you're correct, we've had to outsource a lot of this work. It's been a substantial cost to the city. And part of the other issue is, we've also had, one of our mechanics was injured at work and has been on light duty since October, so we've actually been really struggling with trying to get some of the work internally done.
But if I'm looking at your fleet operations, the way you've described that previously to the board, you have a consistent policy in terms of replacement, life cycle replacement of vehicles. Number, your fleet is not extremely aged. Is that correct?
Well, I would say there's certain vehicles that aren't aged, but there are other ones that are. And here's the biggest issue. If it doesn't snow, we're in a great position, but if it does snow, we're not in a great position. And I'm not talking a two- or three-inch storm, but if we have a significant snowstorm, we will struggle with the present fleet. And the trucks, just the snowplowing trucks, when I first started, were somewhere about 175,000. Now they're closer to 250. Same with our trash trucks. When we first started, they were close to 330. Now they're upwards to 450,000, and there's anywhere from, you know, a 12- to two-year lead time to get those trucks. The aldermen, I mean, Mirjan Tasio has bonded four trucks, four trash trucks, but they've been ordered, but they're gonna be out a little ways. You know, it's gonna take a while to get them in.
So part of your operation would be then to try and look to create some synergies, outsource? I mean, if I was looking at this and trying to say your two vacant master mechanic positions, so you're looking at your operational fleet, X number, you know, of vehicles, and are you servicing with that mechanic or also the fire department vehicles at all?
We have not serviced the fire department vehicles. We've, at times, our foreman Cory Venna has gone over and assisted if they had a technical question. The idea was these master mechanics were going to assist the fire department. It's a very competitive position right now, and truthfully, it's probably a $120,000 a year position to fill that master mechanics position, and we're way underfunded in that budget position.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Public Works? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Director Salee, I have a couple of questions. At a previous budget hearing, we had Warden Ed Benessi from the Borough of Woodmont here, and he was speaking about a shortfall he was seeing in his budget. He filled out the form incorrectly, but he mentioned that what the Borough is able to do, that Public Works doesn't have to do, is a savings to the city. Is there any way to estimate how much that savings is? And I don't expect you to have the answer now, but is that something you could follow up for us?
I would, but you'd have to be more specific. I'm not aware of what Ed Benessi said. I would say that if you give me more details, we're happy to answer it, but I will answer in the sense that the work that the Borough does with the contractor they have does have a substantial savings to the city. They take care of, obviously, all the snow plowing. They take care of most of any kind of repair work with catch basins and things like that. They, we clean the beaches there, and obviously, we pick up the trash, but they lighten our load substantially over there. There's no doubt about it. And Ed has a very good price point with the present contractor that he uses.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not asking you to reflect on his price point. I'm just asking you to reflect on if the city had to do the snow plowing and anything else that the Borough does, what that, what that cost could be, ballpark. And again, not, not tonight, but just as a follow-up.
It really depends on how many snowstorms we have and the, if it's a cold winter, a warm winter. If we're putting swalt down, it's kind of like, I wanna know what the price of a car is. It really depends on what you're gonna, what car you're gonna buy, and it really depends on the winter. So snow plowing-wise, and I don't have all the numbers in front of me, it's been a while since I spoke with Ed, but he gets very good value for that. I mean, we're figuring, you know, an average snowstorm that we have, you know, we can put anywhere between, you know, $20,000 to $40,000 worth of swalt down on a storm. You know, especially if it's a cold weather storm, where we're gonna anticipate colder weather after the storm ends. So with him, and I think, and I don't know the exact mileage, I think he's got six miles, is it? But I can get that information for you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Another question. Can we talk just a little bit about the sewer capacity? So I know that our water treatment systems, our sewer systems are like kind of working at or above capacity. Do we have, should we be concerned about a budget hit somewhere down the line?
I think we should definitely be concerned with the sewer system as a whole. Right now, as long as we don't have heavy weather, a lot of rain, we, our capacity is fine. But when we have rain, we have I and I, which just means water's getting into the system that's not intended to get into the system presently. Right now, in the Heatherstone area, we're pipelining those areas, and we're hoping to reduce the inflow on that by 10 to 15%, but there's no guarantee. And just to be basic, so we're taking an old pipe, an old pipe that has a lot of holes in it, and we're putting a new fiberglass liner in it. And then we go up the lateral to a certain point. So we're hoping to get some savings out of that, but it's not inexpensive, and we're gonna hopefully be doing that every year for the next few years. We're also doing a SSES, I think is the code for it, which is our global study on the whole system, to see where we have faults and where we can improve. And that's presently going through with Weston and Sampson, and they're doing that with, working with us. When I say us, we're doing traffic control and other things to help them do it.
So other than these, what I would call like pipe fixes and stuff like that, is, at what point do you see we might have to invest in more capacity, and what could that look like? Is that expanding the current plants? Is that adding another plant?
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't add another plant, but we would look at adding capacity and changing the process, how they process the sewage coming into the plants.
Okay, right. Thank you. If I may, I have another question on solid waste.
Sure.
So it's, it's a really large number. I know I asked you about it last year. You talked about the issues with, that was up for contract, I think, bid or renewal. Can you just talk about how that turned out and how we arrived at $3 million, a little over $3.1 million in the budget this year?
Sure. So when we did the budget the previous year, a year and a half ago, not this past October, November, we were looking at, at the present, at that time, recycling was at $94 a ton, and our trash was at $72.25, I believe, and we anticipated trash going up to $95 to $105 for tipping, just for tipping. We ended up getting a little bit better favorable number on that, so we have a little bit of savings, but that savings is gonna go to the parts for the trash trucks that we're taking out of that account as a budget transfer that you're gonna see on, I think it's May 5th or whatever the meeting is. So there are some savings in it, but we're beginning, we're gonna be taking money out of that account to fund the parts account in the garage.
Okay. And do you expect those savings to also impact the next year's budget that we're looking at right now, or?
Well, I anticipate the cost of living, our cost of living changes, well, number one, our recycling changes every quarter, so that I can't anticipate, but our cost of living changes for our tipping fee, we anticipate a cost of living of at least 3% in July 1st, so we'll see a 3% rise on that number.
Okay. All right, last question. We've, we've had quite a few residents asking us questions and raising issues about the transfer fees. So I know there was a change in policy last year. Can you just speak to the thinking behind that and the pickup trucks versus SUVs? People have complained that it's unfair.
Yeah, listen, I'd like to get rid of it all and charge everybody, because that's what most other towns do, and that's the truth. We've been very diligent on raising fees gradually, but trash is a very expensive process, and that transfer station probably costs us close to, I don't know, $400,000 just in man-hours in that part to run. So it's a cost that, if you're using the transfer station, you should pay for some of those costs, and that's what we're trying to do right now. And again, if it was up to me, I would, I agree with you. Everyone that comes over the, into that transfer station should have a fee. Most other towns charge when you...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the argument that I heard a lot from residents is, why not charge a little bit less to the pickup trucks and then actually charge the SUVs?
Well, I think our rates are pretty low for what we offer. We take pretty much everything, and it's, that transfer station is a very nice added benefit for all the Milford residents, but there's a lot of people that don't use it, you know? So even the rate with the trucks right now, I think is pretty fair.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Beatty.
Through you, Mr. Vitro, to Director Salee. Thank you. I'm puzzled. I'm sitting here as an elected official, listening to 19 open positions, and I've looked at this every which way. I'm really asking for your opinion. I have been on the committee. I have been chair of the Public Works Committee. I have a background and experience in public safety, and I cannot figure out how you can operate with 19 open positions if they're really needed. And this has come up, and we were talking about this in pandemic. 19 is more, it got worse. It was 12, it was 13, it was 14. Now it's 19 positions. Do we need a task force to look at that and see if we can use some of the revenue that's generated from Public Works? Because I also did the research and determined that you are a revenue generating operation for this city, with your grants from the state and from DEEP, et cetera. It enables the city to take in money. There's so much more to this, and I'm really just wondering, I guess I'm getting embarrassed about what our role is. Should we just keep approving these positions? And this is a cross-party. This is not meant for this administration. Have you looked at, for instance, you talked about saving $800,000 for the fire department project? We all know what that entails. We all know that your people are doing more with less. Or is not true? Have I been fooled? Can you do with 19 less positions? And could we save that money in the budget? And where are the unions in this? If they're legitimate positions that you need, where's the outrage about it?
Well, I'll answer the question too fastly. We are definitely more efficient, the new contract that we have. We now have sanitation workers coming in on Wednesday, so they alleviate or help some of the peaks and flows that we have with our workflow. With the new equipment that we've purchased, we've definitely become more efficient being able to get to job sites with all the equipment we need, with all the men.
I know all that. I'm a staunch advocate. You know that.
Yeah, no, you have. What I would say is, we are in the interview process. It's very challenging right now, and we do wanna fill these positions, but like this past, a month ago, we interviewed, I think it was nine or 10 truck drivers, and we lost two that, you know, originally said yes, then said no. It's very challenging. And we're going to fill the positions, and yes, we do need the positions. It's just a matter of, right now, we're running a very tight ship, and the staff has been very receptive. You know, we've incurred some overtime because of it, but we've definitely, I think we've, you know, we've done a good job trying to manage where we are right now with our staffing, but we are gonna fill the positions.
Well, this goes back so many years. It was pandemic, it was that we didn't have the right software and hardware, we didn't have the right personnel and HR, we couldn't post, and then we're not competitive, and a combination of all those things. If we're not competitive in salaries, is, are we looking at examining that to see how and if we could be more competitive with fewer salaries? Hire 10 people at a higher salary to get them filled?
Yeah.
It's a challenge. I'm really saying.
The custodial services recently, we've been very lucky. We've brought in some people that have done a really good job, and I've been really surprised the difference in the quality of the employees that we're interviewing. The other positions have been a little challenging, especially supervisory, working leadership, or the leadership positions. It is. It's challenging. When people come in for an interview and you offer the job and they turn it down, that's concerning, you know? And I'm talking more of the skilled people, the electricians, the plumbers, the HVAC people, but I think that as a whole, we, this past contract, we did a good job of increasing wages to a number that's fair. It is a different world now, though, because most people now are not looking at, and why I say most people, younger people interviewing are not looking for the benefits, the healthcare, all the other, they're looking for the dollar. And so that's where we might struggle a little bit, but our total package, I think, is very competitive at the present time, except for some specific positions.
So one year from now, you could expect to have made some progress with the filling?
I would definitely say yes, yes. We'll be in a better position a year from now. And the only, here's, here's the issue. We're making good. My biggest concern, and I know I've stressed this before, is a major event, and it doesn't even have to be a snowstorm. It could be a hurricane, it could be a wind event. We've been very aggressive in the last few months, trying to get to a lot of the long-term complaints we've had with trees and stumps, and that's one of the areas that we've been working with our staff. We bought a new stump grinder, a manual, an automated stump grinder that goes out, and it's, it can, it's on tracks. So we have a lot of good work to do, and we're continuing to do that work, and I think, I agree, we could fill some more positions than we will.
And as an aside, even just looking around the town, the new benches that, I know they've been there for a while, but they popped up in one's vision during spring. The place looks great. We see the people, all the events in the city and the work that's going on. It's hard as an elected official with a background that I have to get a grasp on what is going on with that in terms of budget and real need. You should know that. So for next year, I mean...
You can grill me next year if we're not better.
Any more questions for Public Works? Alderman Healy.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the director. Can you update us on the issue relative to the contamination, Long Island Sound, and the expenses that had incurred, and whether or not there was any state funding that was available to remediate what we've spent?
Alderman Healy, I, we have not looked at reimbursement for state funding, and I haven't even thought about it, to be totally honest. The good news is that we have definitely made a lot of progress, and the beds have been opened. Now, this is bad timing. Stratford last week, and I talked with the Aqua Center, Aquaculture Center down on Rogers Ave, Stratford last week had an issue where they took a generator offline to repair it, and during that timeframe, they lost power to the building. So their sanitation or the sanitizing component was offline for two or three hours, so they put a pause on opening up some of the beds closer, because, for long and short, there's these lights that sterilize the bacteria. It doesn't kill the bacteria, it just sterilizes them so they can't reproduce. These lights weren't available because there was no electricity, so the water was going out into, into, into the Housatonic. The Stratford side, nothing to do with Milford, I'll make sure. So the center in Rogers Ave is just being cautious with this, but the beds are going to be open, and we've brought down the counts on every area except one, and we're working on that one area. We have a specific location that we're working on, and it's an issue that we're gonna be addressing. But the good news is, the water's safe to swim, the oysters in the proximity are good, you know? So we, we finally got ahead of this, I believe.
But that, that's good news, and sharing that news on your website, city website, so, because it has been an issue relative to Third District and other places. Warmer weather's coming, people are looking to, you know, use the beaches, and so getting that information, you know, out there and updating it would be a huge benefit.
Okay.
Thank you on that. And then one other follow-up that, on the 19 positions that I talked about, could you please identify for me, in the next few days?
Sure.
The 19 positions, the salary that's there?
Okay.
The age of how long those positions have been unfilled, and whether or not you, as the director of Public Works, feel that any of those positions need to be uplifted in terms of the funding in order to be filled? So if you've had a master mechanic for two, almost two years, that you haven't been able to fill, that we would, we would need to know. And then objectively, looking at it, also tell us whether they're classified or unclassified, you know, positions, and...
When you say classified or unclassified, what are you referring to?
So there is either union or non-union.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so from that standpoint, because that information is important to us in terms of our approach to the global, you know, budget and departmental needs across the entire city enterprise. Thank you.
Okay, I can answer the, they're all classified. They're all union positions.
Okay, thank you.
Just to remind you, Chris, whenever you give information to any individual alderman, give all the information to all the aldermen.
Okay. Well, I'll send it to you, Chairman Vitro, and then you can disperse it, if that's okay? Yes, okay.
Any more questions for Public Works? Alderman Morenne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Director Salee. I just want to clarify. I heard you say that you finally got ahead of the bacterial count, and that you anticipate that those oyster beds are going to be open?
Yes, I spoke with the gentleman that runs the Aqua Center down on Rogers Ave at the beginning of the week, I'll tell you, it's Wednesday, Monday. They feel pretty comfortable, yes. They've done multiple testing, the testing has come back below the threshold. They were a little concerned with what happened in Stratford, that's why. They were a little concerned with what happened in Stratford, that's why. I mean, I saw oysters, oyster boats in the area today. I don't control how they do it, but my understanding is they're open and they were going to continue to test. They're going to be aggressive with testing, though. They're going to test every week, I believe.
So do you have a timeline of when you anticipate that they'll be open?
I think they're open now.
Oh, they're open now?
Yes, yes, yes.
So has anyone spoken to the oyster bed owner who frequently emails us and asks about what the city's doing? I don't know the gentleman's name, but he has sent us several emails. Has anyone spoken to him, too?
I don't want to step over my boundaries here, but my understanding is, they go out on their boats, take the samples, and I assume, and I know what happens when you assume, that the Aqua Center is in direct contact with them, but I can confirm that tomorrow. I never even thought to ask, to be honest with you. I just assumed they would have...
Well, again, to Alderman Healy's point, that disseminating the information would be helpful to alleviate some of the continued inquiry as to what are we doing and where are we, because to your point of just your response indicates adds to the layers of not knowing what all the specifics are.
And I wouldn't feel comfortable telling people to open the beds. That's one of the reasons...
No, no, no. I'm just saying that, you know, communication between parties, that's all.
Okay.
You know, that's oftentimes all that individuals want, is to know that they're being heard and that something is in the works, and I'm not so sure that those individuals know that.
My understanding is that individual calls almost daily to the Aqua Center, but I don't know that for a fact, but that's the understanding I receive from the members of the Aqua Center. But I'll make sure that's cleared up tomorrow.
Any more questions for Public Works? Alderman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Director Salee. I heard you say earlier, the master mechanic position, which you're having a hard time filling, I see it in the budget at $76,000 salary, and I think you said the expectation might be $120,000?
I believe that's where it's going to have to be.
Okay. Now, if that's a union position, do you have the flexibility to offer more? If it were in the budget, do you even have that?
We would have to change the grades and make some adjustments, and I'd be working with Human Resources, Tanya Barnes, to do that.
Okay, okay.
But, yeah, it's...
I just want to understand the process.
Yeah, mechanics as a whole, and I'm, when I say I'm speculating on that, that's what I think the number's, it could be a little less, it could be a little bit more, but they're in high demand right now, and every garage is struggling to keep, and I don't care if it's an automotive garage or a heavy equipment garage, they're all in the same boat, they're really struggling right now to find mechanics.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any more questions for Public Works? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
And I want to compliment you guys on the beautiful job you did on the office where we meet for our commissioners' meeting. Did all that work in-house, that's, you got to be complimented. That was a great job. Thank you.
I appreciate it, Phil. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to recess until...
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, point of information. When would our next meeting, we're going to...
I'm going to say that, Mr. Alderman Vitale.
Just asking for a motion.
Give me a chance.
You were asking for a motion to what?
I'm asking for, if you'd let me finish the sentence, oh my God. I will entertain a motion to recess until Thursday, May 8th, 2025, at 7:00. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? See you on May 8th. Thank you very much.